So I'm excited. I'm ready to go for the next couple of hours. It was so fun to celebrate, Loretta. Wow, gosh. Okay, so we're coming back and, um... Did I start too early, Jennifer? Do we have who we need to have in this?
There we are.
Sorry, Ashish, where? I saw Prashant early. I can't believe the board is ahead of you this time. This is like... Let's just mark this as Madam Chair, I just want to say. So we have item... We're starting with item eight, which is our Pension Solution Project Update. That's one of the big three initiatives that we are undertaking right now. So we're going to be getting our update with Ashish, Bill Perez, I believe, right? Bill, I'm so glad to have you come and present to us. Prashant, and then Graham from Grant Thornton. And just a reminder, we've finished all our action items, so the rest of the items are all information items. So, and again, we'll let them present. As you have questions, go ahead and write them down, and we'll take questions at the end.
Okay.
Okay, Ashish?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Ashish Jain. I'm Chief Technology Officer. Along with me today, Bill is the co-sponsor of the project. Prashant Mittal, Project Director, will provide you the update. And Graham will provide the oversight update. So I will just kick in to give it to Prashant.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thanks for the opportunity to provide update. So I will start the update with a review of 2019. And I would say it was a very busy, challenging, but very productive year for us. We accomplished pretty much all the major goals we had for 2019 last year. There are some key activities that we have listed here. If you recall, we worked on the new file format proposal last year. We also worked on the Pension Solution Budget Optimization effort. And we also completed our five functional demonstrations, with three of them in 2019. And we had a pleasure of having Karen in our functional demonstration. It was a very successful effort and very important for us to make sure that we are getting in the right direction from the perspective. We also launched our soft launch environment, which was in October of last year. The soft launch environment is a key for us to make sure the employers have a tool to get ready for the new system. So in summary, a lot of great progress in 2019, and I thank you all and for the assertive leadership, for all the support, guidance, and interest in taking us this far. For the function rollout one, I said we launched the employer readiness environment in October last year. And the purpose of employer readiness environment is to make sure employers have a tool to get ready for the new system. It's as simple as that. And we also launched an employer support portal. Employer Support Portal is a one-stop shop for employers to access all the resources they may need to get ready, which includes training opportunities for them, as well as making sure that they have a clear understanding of what is expected in the new file format, in the old file format, for the... in the new system. We also have a dedicated team of experienced staff who is focused on making sure that we do outreach to each and every employer in our system and make them aware of all the resources they have at their disposal to prepare themselves and make sure we show them that how the new system is going to work. So it's more of a in-person training, in-person conversation to make sure they are aware of what is expected and how to get to the destination. Team, as a matter of fact, completed the pilot outreach with three employers, Pleaser, Orange, and San Diego County of Education. It was very successful, and they are marching towards doing outreach to the other employers at this point of time. So excellent progress towards that effort. And we are already able to use the soft launch environment that we went live with in October with three employers, and more are on their way. For the function rollout two, this year is all about testing. Lots of effort has gone into this journey around the function rollout two. It's about benefit calculation, which is a key for everything we do in the system. So I want to draw your attention to the two areas here. One is around contractor acceptance testing, another is user acceptance testing. There are two types of testing we do in the system. One is done by the vendor partner, CGI. And they are done with the part A of system testing. And right now, they are working on the part B of system testing. If you see the placement, it's in the bottom of the two charts that shows what has been done in part A and what we are working on part B. As you can see that in the part B chart, that we are slightly behind the execution and the pass rate. But again, CGI has enough mitigation plan to bring it back on track. On the other side, we as organization are preparing for user acceptance testing. It's an activity for us to make sure the system is working as expected independently. And the testing is going to start in August, but there are lots of planning activities that are going in to make sure that it kicks in as expected. And the reason it's in yellow is because we are a little bit behind in terms of planning. But again, enough mitigation plan are in place to bring it back. And so overall, things are progressing reasonably well from a function rollout two perspective. For the function rollout three, we reported last time that we completed the FIT-GAP exercise, which is nothing but requirement confirmation. And FIT-GAP is a way for us to communicate to the vendor partner what we expect them to build for us. And that exercise resulted into some of the gaps which both parties were able to reconcile. And we are progressing our journey in... on the design and development phase right now, and things are going pretty well. I want to wrap up the update by sharing some of the key activities that are ahead of us in this year. So for the function rollout one, I said we launched the employer readiness portal. And the team will continue our engagement with each and every employer to make sure they get ready to use the new system. That is going to be our main goal from the function rollout one perspective. For the function rollout two, we will continue to ensure our testing activities are progressing as expected. And we also want to... We are looking forward to complete our business process documentation as well as a training material. Business process documentation, training materials are important for our staff to get ready. So again, lots of important and critical activities ahead of us for function rollout two. For function rollout three, we should be done with our design and development activities this year, and testing planning will start. That's all I had from the update perspective unless... And I'll be happy to take any questions you may have or pass it on to Graham and take questions after that.
Don't see any questions in the queue right now, so... Yeah, okay, great. So why don't you go ahead and Graham, and then we'll take a question at the end.
Yeah, he's coming.
Okay. So good afternoon, everyone. And I'm Graham Finley with Grant Thornton, presenting our regular independent project oversight report. And I can skip to the next slide. I mean, in summary, this is really a continuation of the message that we had at the last board meeting. The project remains on schedule and on budget overall, but it's a very busy spring. There's an awful lot of work to be done, and so I would say if there are... There are probably three areas that are on our watch list, sort of the highest priority for us to be monitoring. And those three would be... The first would be around scope management. You may remember in prior board meetings, we talked about this process that CalSTRS and Team CGI have to agree on whether... If a change is identified, whether it's something that's in scope or out of scope, and whether there's a cost impact, it's called the Scope Determination Process. And the project learned some lessons about the application of that process during the Function Release One exercise. And so they've gone through an effort to update that and make some improvements to it. And CalSTRS and CGI have agreed on some changes to it. And so what we're looking at right now is that sort of the process in use in a live environment over the next few months, as any changes come up during Function Release Two testing. And so we'll be monitoring to see how effective that is, that the hope is that there'll be something of a more efficient process going forward. So that's item one. Item two is contract acceptance testing. Prashant had mentioned that, you know, CAT-B testing is referred to as underway right now. It's tracking a little bit behind. CGI has a plan to get back on track. We'll probably have a better idea in March about how well that plan is likely to work. It's obviously a major driver of the schedule, probably the single biggest driver, about how the project's going to go over the spring and whether the project will be on track to enter user acceptance testing on time. So that's, you know, that's probably the biggest focus, the way it's taking. And also, the IVNV team is focusing very deeply on that process as well. And then the third area that's really related a lot to the testing is the demands on team resources. And this is both on Team CGI in terms of their staffing of the project, but also on CalSTRS' side and the business resources in particular. Because it's got a lot of demands in terms of multiple parallel streams of project work, and then of course, they have to manage operations as well at the same time. And balancing all of that is quite a challenge. One tool that's recently been provided that will help with that a little is CalSTRS. CGI has recently delivered the latest version of their updated schedule, which includes fairly detailed resource projections for the next several months. So that's going to enable us to look at what really the expectation is for demand for resources and then match that against supply. So we have a better idea about what the challenges are going to be and how well the project's going to be able to continue to track with that over the next several months. So those are the primary areas we're going to be focusing on. Really, I mean, that's sort of a segue into my next slide. So these are really the things that we're going to be watching over the next couple of months in the spring. The employer readiness adoption, Prashant mentioned that it's... There's a lot of efforts being happening already. There's another half dozen or so employers that are gearing up to come onboard to the environment. So we'll be monitoring that process. And then the resources, particularly the business personnel resources, we're going to be working with Bill to sort of close out that transition process to the business sponsor. And then FR2 testing, you know, the biggest thing of all probably in terms of tracking how that is going and the readiness for user acceptance testing to start. And then finally, seeing how this revised Scope Determination Process works in practice to address any emerging questions about scope changes. So they're the main things we'll be looking at over the next couple of months. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Somehow, Gail, you fell out of the queue somehow. Okay, Betty?
Thanks, Sharon. Thank you for the update. I just want... I had a couple of questions, and maybe to Graham, if I could start with you. So in terms of addressing the change request issues that have been raised, are you anticipating changes in project governance to accommodate those, or...
No, it's really a... It's really a... It's a fairly detailed process that runs within the existing governance process to further elaborate the kind of questions that need to be answered in order to determine if something's in scope or out. And it was... It's almost... It was writing down some things that were sort of informal and making them more prescribed. And that's the idea, to try and get a process that can run. It's never going to be mechanical purely, but it gives more of a machine to run through to come up with an answer that at least then can be presented to the governance organization to make a decision. But there's no change to the government structure.
Good, all right. And then I guess your level of satisfaction with respect to the mitigation of the risk about subject matter expertise and due to the compressed schedule, I guess what's your perspective on that?
So I mean, the perspective is that the project is keeping up with the demands as it stands right now. And so there haven't been, I think, any significant issues where the project isn't able to meet that demand. But it's something we have to monitor, sort of in real time, because things change. And if, you know, for example, if something gets delayed by a week or two and things shift in terms of meetings, all of a sudden, there can be a, you know, there can be an overlap and a conflict. And so it's not a... There's not sort of a grand concern that there's a resource weakness, but it's something you've got to keep on top of all the time and manage.
Right, okay. That's good to hear. And then just as a general question to everyone, just curious about what type of feedback we are receiving from employers to date? And if anything has arisen to be an unanticipated concern that we need to pay attention to?
So based on what I know, I think I said, we completed our employer readiness budget with three pilot employers, Pleaser, Orange, and San Diego County of Education. The... With Pleaser County, we were actually able to run the new file format. And with San Diego and Orange County, they were not ready with the new file format. However, we were able to ensure that the old file format was working with the new system because our new system is going to accept both the old file format and new file format. And our goal in the end is to make sure that every employer get ready with the new file format. But if they're not ready in time, then at least they must be ready with the old file format. So far, the feedback has been around... The biggest challenge that we are observing from employers is about their ability to ready in time for the new file, with the new file format. And old file format is not a big change for them, and I think most of them expect to make that change in time. So we'll be making... We'll be in touch. I think the purpose of the outreach is to make sure they understand all the resources that they have at their disposal, and we show them how the new system is going to work for them. So it's more like the more constraints are on their side in terms of getting ready for new file format. And it's more of a timing issues, less of a technical or any other issue at this point of time.
I just want to add, you know, our team is ground. They are reaching out in person. They just visited LA last week, and we have a feedback. It's just not like what's working. And is it just like open up what kind of help you needed, kind of? So we... I think the response we got looks like it's not clunkiness in there. It's a little bit more smooth as we move, progress in that journey. So we are not seeing, but I think we are collecting the feedback for each employer. And then seeing that if maybe we have to do it a little bit, we have our training a little bit more or not.
The only other observation I would make is that the next set of employers that are coming on in the next month or two, they represent a pretty good representation of the diversity, particularly in terms of in-house systems versus commercial products. And so seeing that set is going to give a pretty good idea of the general affection employer-wide.
Good, okay. Look forward to that. Thank you.
Gail?
Thank you. And thank you for all that information. So sort of to your points around the risks and this next, the functional rollout three and some of the concerns, have the schedule and the staffing plan indicated, do you see, like, in addition to all the issues that you've talked about, the risks, what do you guys see as potentially impacting the full rollout of three? And I'm just wondering, it looks like there's some risks vis-à-vis the budget based on your presentation and yours. What do you see those as being?
I think this is a very good question. I think Karen also asked this question. So when the baseline of a project, we anticipated that there will be some challenges with the resources. We had to, you know, ramp up, ramp down kind of approach. And then I think you heard the... Our theme is collaboration in CalSTRS in general. Julie is not in here. We're talking constantly, you know, in which division we are seeing that, what kind of help is needed. Now Bill is here, but Cassandra, Jack, and all the leadership, wherever is needed is the priority for us. So I don't think... I don't anticipate that our budget or the schedule will have issue with the resource crunch. It just... We have to just, just like I think Graham is saying, the scope. Sometimes we have the, you know, can we do this one? Can we do... So we are very much in the CR process assessment. Cassandra and I and Bill and all, we all are just going over every other week to just see any new thing is coming and this really is a new scope or is the existing scope? You know how we're clarifying. So it's just not everything is... will be done through Pension Solution. So we are very cognizant about that one.
Thank you. And in terms of the timeline, your...
So timeline, I think... So far, we're still saying that we are going live in October. It's all just like Graham mentioned, that we are closely watching CGI, the CAT, you know, contract acceptance testing, how things will evolve in there. And the way the Megan and Joel is here, the discussion we had, they have enough mitigation plan to whatever 5%, 10% they are delaying in. You know, there are some delays in there, how they will catch it.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think at this moment, I don't think any anticipation that maybe we are... The quality of the product as well as the schedule will...
Thank you very much.
From my perspective, I think, actually, I'd follow along with what maybe the last thing that Ashish mentioned. One thing I would say on the scope management, I will give CalSTRS credit for being pretty disciplined at this stage about whenever there's a, you know, a question about adding something to the scope or changing the scope, one of the questions that's in the mess is can we actually get this done in time? And is it absolutely necessary? And that becomes part of the decision-making process, so, you know, that's front of mind. But if there's a, you know, a potential unknown that could impact the timeline going forward, it's this question of quality, right? Because what you've got effectively right now is a production line producing test results, right? And it's a machine. If anybody's done any operations research type work, it's really a... You're producing widgets, and it's all tracking productivity per person and pass rates. And it's a very sort of calculated mathematical process. But then the thing that comes out of there is software that also needs to work. And the assessment of quality and how to judge, yes, a test is, you know, quote-unquote "passed", but what does that mean in terms of our level of confidence that that means the software will actually work in production? It's monitoring that piece as well as just the, you know, the numbers behind it. And if there's a chance for something to come out of the woodwork, it might be that, you know, some flaws in quality appear. And I think all the appropriate processes are in place on the project to not make that a likely thing to happen, but it's always something you've got to be careful about.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Is it accurate at this point, Ashish? Are we halfway? I mean, if you were to give a ballpark for some of the new board members, and you were to say, like, where are we at? I'm very aware that this is updates that you regularly give. This is a big project for us. What would you... Where would you say we're at in the process of this?
So I think as soon as the CAT will be done from the CGI perspective, I think we'll say yes, we are. And now is...
Approximately.
I think we are there, halfway, and maybe more than that, a little bit, because we already did all the hard work about the scope determination and all.
Thanks. And just that's just a reminder, this is... We're going to, you know, we continue to monitor this project. It's part of our role as a board is to provide oversight. It's a large project, a long project, six to seven years, a lot of resources.
Yes. So we don't want to... I think the analogy Graham gave, we don't want to go, come here, watermelon, you know, kind of, you know, it's green, and then you say, oh, what's going on in here? So I think we will keep you updated.
Great. Thanks so much. Okay. Okay, great. Karen, did you want...
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a real quick question, or the presentation is done, right?
We're done.
Yeah, okay.
But you can go through that.
So I was looking at TRB 120. And when you talk about... We talk about the training, and you might have already said something in reference to this before. But if... Is there a way that we're... That CalSTRS plans to either log the training or make... Do an audit? Or not, like an audit our history of who got trained, if they got trained? Because a lot of times, something new to people, they don't really know what they need, what questions they need to ask. So that was the kind of the background of the information that I was looking for. And you talk about you're going to do online, the robust online training communication campaign. So what... Can you talk a little bit about that and what that looks like?
Sure. I think we provided the update maybe six months back regarding LMS, Learning Management System, and we are opening up that one to employers. So it's like anything in our system, we log in there, we track what kind of classes you just, you know, are taking and what progress. And we are putting some quizzes in there that if you are absorbing the knowledge, we are providing the training. So that we... From day one, we are starting doing that one. So it just give us a idea that, okay, if someone, we are giving the training, if really that training is impactful or is knowledgeable, they can grab that one, the concept. So... And we have Jeff here, Jeff Zimmer. This is his team put together a very nice training program, and we are reaching out. I just... I'm rehashing again. This is the online training. But it says sometimes you have to just see the feedback, you know, if really they absorb that material or not. So in there, this is a very robust... That's why we use the robust word in there, that we are tracking every moment. It's just like you say, any module is done, then okay, what kind of module they did and where they are... If something is not right, where there is struggle.
Okay. And then is... Does the follow-up just happen to be online mostly, or is there any...
So online, and then we, just like Shanti mentioned, we are reaching out to other employer where maybe need more handholding, kind of, the old versus new. So we're reaching out. We open up that kind of...
A continuous process in that form then? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ashish. Okay, that was an information item. Thanks so much, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to move on to fiduciary insurance review.
Don't be so sad.
I'm like, no, I was excited. I was pitching it. You didn't hear it. I was like, you didn't see my hand gesture, Karen? I was excited. So we've got Brian, Kirsten Casella, Michelle Cowan. Am I saying Cowan? Cowan, welcome.
So for those of you who haven't met Kirsten Casella, Kirsten is the operations director in the Office of General Counsel. She's been running things for about seven years now. She runs all the contracts and she runs the budget. She does... Basically does all the hard work. And one of the things that she does is oversee some of the contracts, cybersecurity contract and fiduciary insurance contracts. Some of you may have turned in your 98 cent check to Kirsten, so you might know her well. But I do want to preface this for those of you that have been on a board for a while, that you may be getting some PTSD from this. We went through this. We spent about four years constructing an insurance product that fits the board's desires, provides quite a bit of protection, indemnification, defense costs. This is before you because that contract expired, and so we have another contract. And we awarded it to Aon, and Michelle is here with a tremendous amount of expertise to give you sort of some more information. And then at the end, we'll decide with your guidance whether you want us to bring back something again for you, another couple of choices, or whether you're just going to say, okay, move on. So it is an information item. We just want to get your feedback, like, oh, we'd like to see more. And so with that, I'll ask Kirsten to take the lead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. So as Brian said, I'm Kirsten Casella in the Office of the General Counsel. I have Michelle Cowan here with me, who's going to run through the program. But just to give you a quick overview, we did an RFP in September to go out for a new fiduciary insurance broker. The RFP was out through October. We received only one submission this year, and it was our incumbent broker, Aon. Aon has actually been our broker since 2015, when they won the bid at that time. So Michelle's going to give a presentation on what we currently have and some potential options that might interest the board. And then, as Brian said, we will take the information we discussed today and move forward with developing a new plan for the insurance program that's effective July 1st. So when we look at the insurance, the plan that we're looking at is for the fiscal year, so July 1 through June 30 of next year. And then we'll come back each year with a proposed plan based on the board's advice. Michelle?
Sure. Thank you. Is there a way to turn the page on the presentation?
Oh, it's over to you, right?
This one?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
There we go. Okay. So I thought we could just discuss a brief overview of your current fiduciary liability program and then talk about some potential options for the upcoming renewal at the end of June for your consideration. We have enough time to plan for a structural change if that is desired. And we'll, you know, certainly happy to answer any questions you have about, you know, our recommendations or what we think are the benefits of your current structure. So first of all, just fiduciary liability insurance. Why do you buy it? What does it protect you for? There is a statutory requirement under the California Education Code to provide fiduciary insurance for your board and your investment staff who are responsible for investments. There's also a grant of authorization under the California Government Code to purchase fiduciary liability insurance. So combination of those things has led to the purchase of insurance over time. What you're currently purchasing provides protection for the board and for the staff of CalSTRS in the event you're brought into a claim. It provides defense and indemnity coverage for you. And it can bridge gaps, potential gaps in indemnification that may exist. So there are statutory indemnification provisions that provide you protection in the event you're named in a suit. There are also protections that you have pursuant to some defense agreements you have with CalSTRS itself. But there can be situations where that might not respond. And the fiduciary liability insurance is there to protect you. It's a backstop to be there in case you need defense or indemnity to be provided. And it's a risk transfer solution for you. So it's a benefit, obviously, to individuals, but also to CalSTRS itself. So the policy also covers CalSTRS, and it covers the plans themselves, to the extent they are... they are named in a lawsuit or otherwise named in a claim. And so that can protect plan assets in the event that those plan assets are implicated in the in the lawsuit. So what you're currently purchasing is a program that's 100 million in coverage. And I thought we could just look at the structure to show you how that's built. If you take a look at page three, so you have 75 million of coverage, and I'm gonna have you actually turn one more page. You have 75 million of coverage that's gonna cover three different things. It covers CalSTRS itself in the event CalSTRS is named, it covers the plans. It also covers the indemnification obligations that CalSTRS has or the plans have to the individuals. So it reimburses CalSTRS for the indemnification to individuals and it covers individuals in the event they're not indemnified by CalSTRS or the plans. So all of those combined coverages are within that first 75 million. There's a retention or deductible, if you want to call it that, that applies to the indemnification reimbursement to CalSTRS and to claims against CalSTRS or the plans. There is no deductible applicable to individuals where they are responsible and not being indemnified. On top of that, so you have 75 million of coverage there and on top of that, you have another 25 million of coverage that's dedicated solely to individual. That's board members, directors and officers, investment staff, to protect them in the event that indemnification is not provided. So that is dedicated limit can't be eroded by a claim against CalSTRS or the plans. That's solely for the individuals to provide personal asset protection. So what you have is a balance between protecting plan assets and protecting personal assets. So if you think about the personal asset protection, there's 100 million of coverage total. 75 million of that also protects the plan, so the plan could be eroding that. But it it's a good balance between those. You currently have a $25 million retention applicable to loss of the plan or of CalSTRS. That's a significant retention. And I think if you look historically at how you were purchasing, if you go back many years, there was a million retention and 25 million in coverage if you go back, you know, 14, 15 years ago. And the decision was made, you know, at that time to purchase more, to to insure for more catastrophic loss or potential catastrophic loss, to buy more limit but to take a higher retention. Because you like to have control of any claims you have, it gives you gives you better control to have the higher retention. But one of the things we wanted to talk to you about today is, you know, do you want to maintain that 25 million retention or do you want to make any changes to your current program structure? So I thought we'd talk a little bit about what the options are and answer any questions that you may have. So one question always, how much limit should we buy? I think that you have obviously significant plan assets, so you're never gonna insure for the total amount of your plan assets. That would not be available in the insurance market. But what we do to try to figure out what the appropriate limits are, one thing you can look at is peer data. So this page five will show you some peer purchasing data for entities with plan assets in excess of 10 billion. So if you take very large, very large plans, if you look at that peer group, and this combines not only large plans but large plan participants, we thought that was a better mix of data. Some of the some of the peer data that we have is for, you know, they have plan assets that are huge but very few employees. I think you have added risk with the number of plan participants that you have. So I think combining those two groups and and putting them together in one peer set made a lot of sense. So if you look at that, so plan assets more than 10 billion, plan participants over 100,000. The median purchased by that peer group is 75 million. This is a traditional coverage, so not not that side A coverage that we were talking about, the non indemnifiable loss piece. 75 million is the median. You're actually purchasing 75 million of that traditional coverage, so you're right there at the median. The third quartile purchase is 100 million, so that's where you fall in terms of your total limit purchased. So if you look at this peer group, you're actually purchasing in line with peers, if not a little conservative relative to peers, in that plan asset range. Now, that's one thing to consider. Some other things you could consider with respect to limits are obviously the size of your plans. You know, the the biggest risk that you have is is investment loss. And there is potential for severe, I mean, potential for severe claim in that regard. So in and if you think about that, you could buy way more limit and still not be able to cover a complete investment loss. But, you know, so that's one consideration. And your own claims history, you actually have an excellent claims history. So, you know, that that sort of mitigates that, you know, need for for so much limit. But so all of those are are part of the consideration for total limits. But let's talk a little bit about the structure. If you turn to page six. We've put together three different structure options just to talk about. The first one on the left, option one, is your current structure. So that is, as I said, a balance of protection for the plans, for CalSTRS itself and for the individuals. And it has dedicated limit for individuals that can't be eroded by a claim against the plans. I think that's a, I think it's a good balance. With the higher retention, you're getting very efficient pricing. So one of the things the the insurers looking at your program do like is that higher retention it enables them to give you a very efficient price on the program. But it it is possible to get a lower retention. So we've had quotes for lower retentions over time. I think the the lowest we've ever seen is a million and probably only one carrier would offer you a million. That's very low for for an entity of your size. Something like 10 million is probably likely from more than one carrier, so something like that is certainly possible. But there would be a pricing consequence if you were to do that. So we're estimating it would be about 15 to 30% higher in premium to take your retention up down to 10 million, just as an example. And that's just an estimate, not based on actual quotes, but to give you some consideration there. Option two would be just to purchase the traditional coverage that we were talking about. So just the combined coverage for the plan, the indemnification and the individual non indemnifiable loss without that piece on top to protect the individual directors and officers that can't be eroded. So if you just take off that top set, that would be option two. That's giving you less protection as individuals than than option one, but would be a little bit less expensive. So maybe, you know, slight premium difference, maybe 15% lower premium, just as an estimated guess on that. Option three is something also to consider. So option three doesn't cover the plans, doesn't cover CalSTRS as an entity, but does cover the individuals where they're not indemnified. So it would be the least breadth of coverage, but it would still provide coverage for the individuals in the to the extent you're subject to a claim and need response from the insurance company. So this is where you're not being indemnified, you're on your own, the insurance responds. It would be the least expensive way to purchase the insurance. That type of insurance would be subject to a zero retention. So those are the three basic options. There are variations in between there, but maybe I'll pause for a moment and see if you have any questions.
Three sufficient to discuss, I think. Bill?
Those are our only three?
No, she said there's more.
Oh, there are more?
But do you want to hear?
Okay, so so let me let me just go back when you talk about that that graph that shows the median. And then we're in the 75% quartile, right? And then I've got to go back to that. Could you go back to that slide for a second? No, that one, yeah. On the maximum quartile, I mean, it would be helpful to know what plans that have 100 billion, 100 billion dollars in assets, where their coverage is. And because, you know, the the this this pool that we're looking at, it has a lot of smaller funds. And so to me, this is, you know, this doesn't help.
Okay, you want over?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we're underinsured. You know, that's my impression.
You don't have a lot of peers, right? You have a very large.
Well, I mean, just that, just that 225 billion there, who are those people, who are they?
Brian, do you want to chime in?
Well, it's a it's a good question to get more information. I was just gonna say that this insurance product is not designed and could not be designed to cover your losses related to your portfolio. There is no insurance product out there. This is really related to lawsuits brought against boards or systems for breach of their fiduciary duty. So we look at actual realistic lawsuits and we don't see anything in the billion, $2 billion range. And so trying to find that that right spot. The other thing I would tell you is we have 10 years of history. We've had one.
That affects the premium.
Right, and we've had, we've had one claim and the claim was, we got dismissed after, I don't know, a couple of months. We had to, we had to hire Insurance Defense Council was the only, but we paid out of our own pocket because we have a $25 million retention. The nice feature of what we have now is it provides an extreme level of protection for board members. So it makes it so, so if someone wants to serve on this board, they don't have to make a decision between exposing themselves to liability and performing public service. And that really is the beauty of the design. But as far as, and and my good friend, CEO and former insurance commissioner of Colorado can probably tell you that you cannot, you can't insure against a sort of catastrophic portfolio losses that, you know, when you think of the worst case scenario.
So there's always the black swan. I mean, you know, and and that's what insurance is all about, is insuring against that that catastrophic event that you didn't anticipate. And and one question I have before we get to that is, is this, I forget the terminology, so forgive me, insurance, former insurance commissioner, but with the coverage, in one year, let's say we have three claims, all of which are in excess of 40 million, 40, you know, billion dollars. I mean, does the coverage, I mean, there's insure and and you use up your your coverage amount. I mean, does that come into play?
Well, you would look to, it would be an administrative expense of the fund at that point. So once you use up your insurance coverage, you would then look at as an administrative expense of the fund, as you would the first 25 million. So it's almost as though you're self insured, like other funds are, right? So Pers is self insured. You're you're almost as though you're self insured and this is kind of the sweet spot where you have an insurance product. So that first 25 million is, you know, we pay, like, for example, the one claim that we have, we we're paying out of our pocket because we're not gonna get up to that 25 million. So trying to find that spot with the right pricing, because there is a significant difference in pricing as you go higher, especially if you go higher in the retention. So we've been trying to to work on that. What really, the the majority of the work that the board did over over several years with 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 outside counsel, with fiduciary insurance, was try to come up with a product that really protects the board members. And it's a good product and just, but I I think we should get you all the information you want. I just want to know that.
I guess the one thing I would like to see is if we increased our coverage to, you know, let's say 50 billion more, how would that affect pricing?
It's a good question.
I mean, just, just, just to see how that would affect the premium.
Yeah, okay.
You know, just, you know, and all the way up to, you know, 225. And how it would affect the premium, you know. But we can do that for sure. And let me underscore Brian's point. This is.
We already, we've already got to that date that we decided to buy insurance. But a lot of entities just self insured, so this is about, we already, we agreed to have insurance, so that's.
Right. And and to Brian's point, we spent several years, I remember those years. That's why I maybe introduced it with my, we're gonna talk about fiduciary insurance. So not to say we can't tweak it, I think Bill's request is is fine, that we could come back, but I I think it it just seems like, given the conversation, I know different board members have different levels of, like, for me, I don't worry so much because I don't have a ton of, you know, but but the reality is, I think every board member wants to feel protected and and insured that, God forbid, something could happen and we just want to make sure that we're as prudent, I guess would be the word.
I just asked Michelle a question. Michelle, have you seen?
Right, but it's really, this is really about fiduciary insurance. So it's really about.
But if we're if.
Protecting us.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Protecting, protecting, right? I want to make sure I'm not speaking out of turn, right?
But it's, but it covers the the entity as well, right?
Yes, it does.
And and the entity's assets come from the fund, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, well, okay, let's, we can talk, we can have the information and come back and clarify.
Could you say, Michelle, have you seen claims of any exorbitant magnitude in your in your career?
Not, no, not exorbitant magnitude, certainly not. I mean, certainly claims, right?
Yeah, of course.
We see claims, right? There have been, you know, claims regarding, you know, benefit calculations or changes in benefits or investment losses, right? But not not to the, not to the magnitude.
Right.
That maybe you're thinking could occur. Now, it it could occur, right? You could have a, you know.
I just think.
A type of investment go bad, right?
Yeah, I I think it's easy to get stuck on our our total assets here and and think about that, but but it's, I think the more relevant metric is the underwriting history of this product line. And what what does that experience tell you from the underwriting history? Then. Not only of this fund, but. Yeah. Yeah, no, that would be very interesting as well. I mean, that's how, I I just, I'm sorry, I I look at it from the private sector point of view. With this problem with insurance, like title insurance, another good example where there's no claims, yeah, just products that do not have a lot of claims, it's hard to price right.
And if you think about it, even if you had a a large investment loss, a settlement would likely be a a small portion of that.
That's right.
Right, not the total amount of your loss, just the way that the litigation works and how settlements work. So.
Yeah.
Should take that into consideration.
So I'd like to check in with the other board members. So Bill's making a request to to get more information, is that amenable to everyone? And bringing this back again to another board member? Okay, let's do that. Okay, anything else? Great, thank you. Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Kirsten. Appreciate it. Okay, Jack?
I bet you're all thinking about a career in insurance right now.
Uh, that would be, I was thinking title insurance, actually.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
Good one. You know, just a couple of things. I thought I'd start out by mentioning a few things that aren't in the report, just that that are noteworthy to you. And something happened yesterday while you were occupied that's that is relevant to our funding and and the plan. And that is that the state auditor issues what we call the high risk report for the state. It's a very important report and it receives a lot of attention, so it's not a, it's not a small matter, I guess I would say from from my standpoint. And they identify 13 issues. These are the big issues facing the state of California for risk and we're in those 13. That's why I want to make sure you understand that and what that means. We have had the, I don't know what the right word is, but we've been in the report now since, let me get the date, 2011. So there are 13 issues. And just to give you a flavor for what what are these issues, because they affect all of us here. One would be water infrastructure because of ongoing efforts to improve emergency planning for dams. The state has not ensured that local educational agencies spend their LCFF funds appropriately. Considered a high risk. Despite some progress, affordability issues persist with the UC and CSU systems. And then the new high risk that was added this year that a number of our board members are familiar with is that the transition to FISCAL, this is the state's financial system, has diminished the state's financial reporting and accountability and could lead to increased borrowing costs. Now, we actually, the majority of state agencies are going on to FISCAL, we are not. We are one of the ones that are have our own financial system, but that's an example of a very important business system that the state has been trying to get right. But we've been on this list. I'm just gonna read you, you might wonder, why is CalPERS not on this high risk? And what is the issue here about pension plans? Is this just about unfunded liabilities? Or is this something about CalSTRS that what, why are we on this risk? And again, 2011, so this is before we passed our funding plan. And since I've been here a bit, I would tell you that this actually was one of the data points that was helpful to us. You might think it's not good to be on this list and probably that's how the others feel that are on this list. But for us, it was an important thing to really bring to public policymakers' attention, the difficulties of of how to get proper funding for pension plans when you're not in total control of the funding mechanism. So when it came time to pass that bill with Governor Brown in the legislature, this wasn't the deciding factor, but it was always part of the conversation that, gosh, the state has identified this as a high liability risk and the prior governor put a lot of attention on on long term liability. So I'm just gonna read you one sentence from the report from yesterday because it captures the issue for us. So the the headline in the report is, "CalSTRS is a high risk agency because of the significant time necessary to reduce its unfunded liability." Now, they have relied in this write up of two or three pages really on on the actuarial reports we give you. So the. So the the risk report we do every with you in November is really the the substance of what's in here and they review this with us in advance and we all get comfortable with how this is going to be presented. But the key sentence is this, state law limits CalSTRS ability to modify state and employer contribution rates and its current authority may not be sufficient to reach its funding goals. Therefore, CalSTRS is a high risk agency for the state. So you you know, again, um you know, the people can read this a couple of different ways, but I think it's important for us to again underscore why we do these actuarial reports with you, why we take the time to do them. We give them a lot of visibility in the state so people don't we don't just simply say, well, we're on track. You know, it's much more you know this, it's much more complicated than just being on track to being fully funded and the probabilities of other events happening have a lot of new financial nuances to them. So um for my seat, I think it's important to be actually that the state auditor has properly tagged this as one of the risks and I think it keeps the conversation visible to everyone um how important this is. But I want to make sure you you had the context to it because this report does play out um throughout the state and CalPERS is not on it for their situation because their board has control of those contribution streams, so. I don't know, but if you have any comments on the report, I know you're close to those issues, but.
Go ahead, Betty.
No, thank you. And um thank you, Jack, and I think the way you've depicted the spirit of how we should do these um uh notice notices, I guess, from the state auditor, um is exactly right. Um it's really just to kind of put a pin on what we need to continue to pay attention to. And um uh in my mind, I mean, they're highlighting the FISCAL system as that's in my wheelhouse and so that is an appropriate thing to do and we're all just working very hard to be sure we can get to implementation at a expedited fashion so that we can issue the caper and hopefully not impinge upon borrowing costs for the state. But um this is a report that comes out every two years and um I think it's actually a really good uh report for all agencies to take a look at in terms of um just anticipating risk that is considered to be statewide, but also gives us an opportunity to look inward as well to anticipate any of our own. Yeah.
Thank you. On a happy note, we are we're continuing some of our succession work here and we've got three leadership positions we are are filling and made some announcements and I um uh one, if not both, individuals are here that are internal hires and then we have one outside hire. Um I'm I'm real pleased to tell you that Jeff Zimmer and Jeff was back there a minute ago. Oh, he's moved up. There you go, that's appropriate. Jeff has been heading up our change management for the pension solution, which I think you've all go into pretty just how important change management is in that project. It's been a tough one for us. And then recently, he's been doing double duty for us as acting director of member account services, which is the employer relationship for our business. So um when did you start here? It's been I'm trying to think when you start your.
Two thousand five.
Two thousand five, three years after I came here. And Jeff's been in a number of roles here and it's been it's really great to have him in this position because he's really learned our business from a lot of angles. And then to come back and work the employer's side and and make that connection, I think is going to create a a lot of strength in 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 what's going on. And I I'm not sure yet what your plans are for your other position on change management, but.
It's Perjot's problem now.
But but uh but uh we're very pleased to have you in this role. Congratulations. Absolutely. And Cheryl, Cheryl's in the back. And you know Cheryl as well because she has headed up managing our internal audits function, so she knows the uh deep valleys of the organization and the things that we work on and do through that process. But she's been our acting director of recently for enterprise compliance program and made it through the selection process as the very best candidate. So uh she's on board in that role now as our new director. And then thirdly, um it's an outside candidate, so we're I I'm not ready to announce his uh name here today, but we have a new director of procurement in the organization as well. And um that person, as soon as they start work, will be part of the pillars project right away, working on those issues. And uh again, a very competitive process, a lot of good candidates came forward for that. So that is terrific. And then just to comment on the two major areas of the report, um let maybe let me start with the headquarters. You don't need a lot of update because you see it coming in the door, obviously the project and you saw the crane is there and and uh there's a lot of people working. Uh Sharon now has her own construction hat.
I do.
Um so uh she's made through safety training and uh and we'll be doing some with Harry periodic oversight of the project. But this period since I last saw you really is particularly dominated by um finishing the financing mechanism for the building. And again, um Denise, I'm you I don't know, I'm sure you you were witnessing those meetings when we had those discussions before, but really it was Paul Rosenstiel that absolutely badgered us, nudged us, every whatever you want to come up with to uh to try um bonds for this and ultimately green bonds for this. And um none of us had we we buy bonds, but we've never done bonds from this way in the in the building. So it was an enormous collaboration with Julie's staff. A lot of legal work goes into this work, inside legal and outside legal. And um the state treasurer's office particularly is very embedded with this process. Um uh Julie Giordano from the treasurer's office uh came with us to New York as well as treasurer ma. And um as you saw in my write up, the bond sold out in twenty minutes. Obviously, uh well well regarded our reputation and the um the view that the financing of the organization is a is stable. So um again, lots of work going into that. Um permitting process and review by some of the regulatory authorities is starting to uh get to be finalized on the project, so um as as they said to me the other day, it's time to go vertical. So um we've got um a lot of the foundation work done on the project and by the time you come back, um it it will be starting to go up. And um just to kind of keep a metric in mind, um it'll be about a floor every two months. Uh you should expect to see so you can kind of gauge your board schedule by the height of the building if you want to. And hopefully we'll um things will go well. You know, we've had a few things coming through the contingency plan. Uh we'll be itemizing the contingency funds whether we've approved, but nothing that threatens the the budgetary stability of the of the project. So there's always unexpected things, that's why we have a contingency, but nothing that's causing us extraordinary concern at this point at all on the project. And uh you know, I said this to um Sharon yesterday, um what I'm really amazed about is having gone through this project here at length. Um what's amazing about this is we really have a credible alignment between the architect, the project oversight company, um the construction company and our staff. I mean, I I've truly never seen such tight mission alignment over what we want to accomplish with this building, um the commitment to sustainability, to be forward thinking and to stay on budget. Absolutely, everybody gets that. Um so I I'm I'm very confident you're going to have a a project completed in two years that you're going to be very proud of. So that is where that is. And then final comment just on the sustainability report. Um and you know, um we gave you those QR cords cards yesterday that we give out to conferences and everywhere we go now. Um uh so we don't print up many of these reports at all since they're available digitally and um you know, it's an it's an elaborate report to to print. But um this is a complement to what we did investments and Rhonda, Elisa, you you're in the back, back, back. So Rhonda on the left there, Rhonda Lency, really is the author, collaborator, coordinator, whatever you want to say of the report, and she's trained in GRI terminology and requirements. So this report is done to the standards promulgated in Amsterdam. Um and as you saw in the report, um seventy five percent of the largest two hundred and fifty companies in the world now use this reporting format for sustainability. So it's highly likely if you go to any corporation's website and say, what is your sustainability report? It is following this format in what we do. And then Lisa Williams, Lisa is our graphics designer that obviously put all this great information into a package that um people want to read and listen about a story. And uh some of you may have gotten our um uh email delivery system from NCTR yesterday. I'm not sure if you're all on that list or not, um but basically we packaged this and with a video and have sent it out to every public pension plan in America, um so they kind of see what we're doing and telling our story. The the important point again to point out on this thing is that um you were very climate change focused yesterday in your investment conversation particularly, um but this is about enterprise sustainability. So again, when we educate the staff and talk about sustainability, remember the areas that we're flagging in this report. It's about member retirement preparedness, information security, full funding. It's a very different nomenclature of risks than what we have from the more narrow investment focus that we had from yesterday. So this is again, an enterprise perspective and what was and it's very if you're following a GRI report, it has to be very stakeholder driven. This is not just a bunch of executives reflecting on the organization and writing a report. It has to be based on going into the external market and your employees and finding out what's important to them. And what I liked about the graph we had on the second page was you saw between our employee view of the issues and the members' view, they had many issues to choose from, they chose the exact same three issues, information security, member retirement preparedness and path to full funding. And if you think about our business here, um that really has become the the priorities of what you're talking about in your agendas. So it fits very well um with the message of this report. We're very proud of it that we still remain the only public pension plan doing this in America, even though corporations are doing this day in and day out. I'll be going actually to a a meeting of GRI next week in Arizona. We'll be presenting this as part of the conversation.
That's wonderful, Jack.
I don't think I missed anything.
Any questions? Here we go, Gail. Hang on, Gail first and then we'll get you here. Go ahead, Gail.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and congratulations on the bond sale. So we are could you just elaborate a little bit on your decision to sell forty million more? So we, you know, the guaranteed maximum price was three hundred million. We have forty million more that's in the fund.
Budget, but yeah.
Yes. And you know how how will it affect the future bond payments too? Thank you.
But the budget for the building hasn't changed. I just want to make sure we know that. It's three hundred million.
Okay.
That never changes.
I was going to say all everything I told Paul may not be true.
No, no, the budget's three hundred million, it never changes. We'll explain this.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Julie Underwood, Chief Financial Officer. If you turn to TRB one forty nine, this shows you that we did finance three hundred and forty point six million. That included the par amount of two seventy two and the premium amount. But we financed two hundred and ninety seven million for the actual project. Our budget is three hundred million, but we net funded it. So we expect with that money, we don't have to pay it out the door on day one. So we're going to invest that pursuant to permitted investments in our trust agreement. So very safe, like T bills, T notes, those types of investments. And we estimated that we would earn point seven five percent, so that's why we net funded it at two ninety seven. Right now, we're still trying to finalize the um the investments, but it looks like we're hoping to earn between one point four and one point eight percent on that, so we feel like we're um still going to be well um at the three hundred or more to be able to pay um for the project. So that's the project.
Right.
But when you finance, you have to pay capitalized interest and you have to pay financing costs. So on here, the costs were approximately one point seven million plus seven hundred ninety five thousand for the underwriters for a total of two point five million dollars. So there's a cost of financing bonds. But we do that because overall, over the thirty years that it's going to take us to pay this back, the total borrowing cost to do that is only going to be three point two five percent. So.
On the increment, on the additional forty or the entire amount?
Amount that we have to pay back. So we would pay back in total four hundred ninety five point four million over that thirty years, but we have the opportunity as well, it's just part of the financing um opportunity, is to refinance those bonds in ten years. Um if we decide to do that, we could potentially even lower that total borrowing cost, potentially, it just depends on the markets, but even lower than the three point two five percent. So it's even though we have to finance more today, there's still a lot of opportunity because we're we're taking that money today and and hopefully going to earn seven percent on it. So it's just part of the 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 cost of issuing the bonds.
So that's the original financial modeling for the whole deal.
Was that we were going to go four hundred above the.
Well, it's it's but you're saving.
But we're, yeah, you're in the line.
Much money by doing that.
Right.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Well, there'd always be debt service on this. Yeah.
And we're hoping it's even lower if we refinance.
But that would the the that is is a three hundred million dollar project, but the cost is this compared to what you would have spent if you'd lost the uh if you spent seven the seven percent you're not getting. So it really was that was the, if you will, the leverage that Paul urged us to to recognize that this would be a much cheaper building by having this financing.
And putting it back and financing.
Because we could have paid cash for it. We could have paid cash over the three hundred million.
Right.
But again, then we're losing that opportunity to invest and earn seven percent.
That's what we did with this bill.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah.
Then through the through the chair, um. Sorry, Madam Chair, I just I I wonder whenever it's possible recognizing staff constraints, if we could maybe have a a little bit more thorough of a just the the financing explanation you just explained sort of over time. I just think it would be good to have that just so we we have a more thorough understanding. I think we were we didn't fully understand this piece of it, so it would be helpful if if perhaps you could provide that at a future time.
With your office with them or you are suggesting the whole?
Um I whatever your preference is.
We we could certainly provide um updates through Jack's CEO report on how we're progressing each year through the next thirty years. I mean, certainly, we're going to come back to you in ten years and have a conversation with you about um do we want to pay off the bonds? Do we want to refinance the bonds?
Right.
But certainly before that, we could we could provide you updates um either at a meeting or through his report.
It sounds like instead of an update, though, you're asking for more explanation about the funding.
Yeah, I am. I I think I like your idea, Julie, about having having an update as well, but I do think the a more thorough explanation of the the increment and how we're using that to the benefit of the fund through, you know, with with this seven percent assumption, for example, built in and kind of the the cost over time and how it'll save money. I just think maybe seeing that graphically or even through the narrative, a longer explanation, I think would be helpful.
Sure. You know, we might just do a reset.
Whatever, I don't I want to be.
That's fine. It could be the information.
Well, just I I think it might be good just to reset how we originally made that financial decision, the dramatic savings over just taking the money out of the fund, uh recognizing there would be debt service, you know, along. But again, just to get our nomenclature right, is the cost of the building is three hundred million dollars, the budget. Don't don't ever don't ever stray from that.
I think that's helpful. And I I defer to the chair as to how we.
That's completely fine.
I processed that request.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions, Karen? Did you have you didn't want to? Okay. Okay. Great, thank you so much. Thanks, Jack. Anything else? Okay. I'm going to do a time check because appeals is supposed to start soon and we still have a couple of consent items and then we have a closed session item. So just a time so I just wanted to let people know that we probably have it. I'm guessing I'm predicting thirty to forty minutes or so, so appeals is going to be later is my point, so two forty five ish. Um so we are at item eleven, which is a consent agenda item, which means unless and it's an information item, so unless people want to discuss it, it's the state and federal legislation. It's on page TRB, starting on TRB one fifty one. If in these consent items, you can request to pull it. If it's not requested, we can just take it on consent. We don't have to take any action. Anything, anyone? Okay.
Madam Chair, may I?
Sure. Sure. There's there's no vote, actually. It's just a an information item, number eleven. I'm on eleven, you guys, right? So you guys are keeping track. Okay, no worries. Um okay, so um number twelve, the this is a consent agenda item. Uh it is an action item and typically we take um all of these uh items together. These are committee reports, uh the board calendar, which um some board member education, approval of the minutes from our last meeting, uh board member education. Thank you, thank you. Contracts requiring board approval. So if you guys can see on on the agenda, there's items A through E. Uh, contracts requiring board approval. So if you guys can see on, on the agenda, there's items A through E. And according to what I'm seeing, so Brian, I need your help over here. My understanding is we only took action in the board governance committee. Is that right? In 12, uh, 12A5, if I have it right. So I, and that's Betty. And so she has to read her statement, correct? But the rest, is that accurate? Yes? Okay. Um, so before I have Betty do that, though, are there any, um, any other items that people want pulled from that, that batch of items? Items 12A through E. I realize Gere is just passing things out, but anything, anyone? Bueller? Okay. I think we're good. So we'll have Betty read the action item for board governance. It's that to be read during item 12A piece. Do you need that, Betty? I have it. If you.
Okay.
Got it. Just that two paragraphs at the bottom there, right?
I got it. Okay. Um, by direction of the board governance committee, I move to adopt the newly reworked teachers' retirement board governance policy, along with revisions to the committee's policy language contained in subsection capital B2 of section two of the new manual. You want these as separate motions or together?
Can she read them both and then we just take everything together?
And then by direction of the board governance committee, I also move to adopt the proposed succession planning policy as specified on, um, Board Governance 251 to Board Governance 252.
Great. And, oh, it does. Okay. So it's been moved. All those in favor? So are we saying in favor of what she said or the entire batch of 12A through E?
Workover.
Okay. Great. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the guidance. Okay. So it's been moved. It doesn't need a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. We've approved the board governance actions. And then the rest, we're just consenting. Okay. Thank you, Brian. Thank you for your guidance. Okay. Um, let's see. And I don't believe we have, uh, on 13, we don't have any items referred to that committee, open business. Sure. Uh-huh. Hang on one second, Jennifer.
So, uh, Madam Chair, I would like to, at some future date, um, learn a little bit more about the retiree teachers who were referenced earlier by David Lammerow. They're considered long-term retirees who have been negatively impacted by inflation and their purchasing power. I think Mr. Foley is aware of this group of teachers. I don't know where and when we want to fit that into, uh, an appropriate discussion at the board level. But I'd like to understand that issue a little bit more. There's a subset of, rather small subset of our retirees who are long-serving retirees, who are quite elderly, uh, who are, from my anecdotally, anecdotal information I've received, are sometimes making decisions about, do they get their medicine or do they pay their rent kind of stuff? So it's very broad, but I do want to put it on record that I, I'd like to have, uh, at some appropriate time, an education about that group. And if we could work maybe perhaps with Mr. Foley's, Mr. Foley and/or the appropriate person from CTA, NEA, retired staff and the leadership of the board to appropriately agendize that at some future date.
Um, and Pat, hang on one second because I'm just going to make sure we finish our item and then, um, so Jennifer, that sounds like an information request. So we're at number 14, new business, review of information requests. And this, and so you've captured Harry's request. I, I believe we had a couple of other requests as well, correct? So.
We had the request for more information on insurance products.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll get that to you, uh, probably at your next meeting.
Great. Is that, is that it?
Yeah, I also had the request to get the breakdown on the $340 million bonds and also the 10-year average payroll growth for CalSTRS.
Right. That's what I had. I had Betty, Gail, Bill, Harry. Good. Okay. I think I captured, we got everyone. Great. Um, Pat, did you want to make a comment?
Oh, I just wanted to comment. Pat Rutter, CalSTRS retired. Seeing Marotta here in the back, you've never ever put any designation for handicap. And I've talked about it before and I still think about it. Is there a place that you could have set aside for handicap so they, they think they have some spot? And, yeah.
Thanks, Pat. We will definitely talk to staff and help make that happen. Thank you. Um, uh, item 15 is our, the draft agenda for the next meeting. I will say, um, and that's number 15. And I will say, I know, um, Harry and I are in conversation with Jack on, that is a draft agenda. There might be some shifts and movement around that agenda, but that's our draft for now. And then we, um, are gonna, anything else? We're good. Um, so our last item is opportunities for statements from the public. Are there any people from the public that want to say anything that haven't already said things today? You're welcome. Seeing none, I believe that we are adjourned for, uh, the regular board meeting. We're going to go into closed session in the back. And I think the people besides board members, the people who are in the back are Jack, Brian and Amy in the back. And, um, I, why don't we plan, why don't we be optimistic and plan for appeals to start 2:30? And if we're a little bit late, you know, we're going to really work on, we're trying to work on really being on time. So 2:30 appeals and we're having appeals in here, Madam Chair of appeals? Okay. Great. Thanks so much.
Sure. Sure.